I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mary Lee, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united out, invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Anne, if you'd call the roll, please.
Mr. Gerber, Mrs. Waring, Ms. Jemessi-Zurker, Mr. Keenan, Mr. Reiner, Mayor Leckleiter, Vice Mayor Saleh.
Thank you. And thank you all for your patience. We were in executive session. We apologize for the late start. Leading off this evening are some special presentations as well as some proclamations. And first up are Dr. David Axner, Superintendent of Dublin City Schools, as well as Mr. Steve Osborne, I believe, who is our school treasurer. And we have some board members in attendance as well. So whomever would like to come forward, please do so. And the floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I know I speak for the school board and our entire administrative team to say thank you for giving us a few minutes here tonight. Would like to introduce the board members on the board, and three are here and two couldn't be here because of conflicts in work. Scott Melody is on the right there, Lynn May, and Vice President Glenn Callender. Stu Harris and Chris Valentine will be joining us at our board meeting in a few minutes, but we're unable to make it due to conflicts. Well, what we'd like to do quickly is give you a quick snapshot of the district, a couple updates I think you'll find very interesting and be very proud of. Also, just want to remind you that we were here a year ago, and I think since then, achievement-wise, we've got better. We've improved. But the urgency in passing Issue Forty-Eight, our levy, is definitely at the forefront in regards to our work now and getting that done so we can be stable financially. Things continue to move and progress forward in the district. One is enrollment. We are approaching fifteen thousand students, which obviously is very different than the early 2000s. If you think about that, and what does that have to do with an increase of funding? We have increased fourteen hundred students since 2007. And think of that. That's as big as Jerome High School. So we've added an entire school, really, and with no additional, actually less state and federal funds. Dublin City Schools is now the 12th-largest school district in Ohio. And that, too, is something we continue to move up or down the notch, whichever way you look at that. But think about it. Eight districts in the state of Ohio are urbans. So we're right behind urban schools. And I think we'd all agree that, achievement-wise, we have a lot more to speak to. We now have sixty languages that students come in speaking and are really proud of some things that I'll share in regards to the achievement as we move forward. So I'll go through that list, this list, and then what I'm going to do is turn it over to Steve, who will talk a little bit about back to the issue and what's on it. And then I'll quickly go over some of the reductions that are really critical and will wound this district for a long time. But I didn't want to start with all that in numbers before we talked a little bit about our achievement and I think what we, as a district and a community, can all be proud of. We, last year, were the highest achieving school in all of central Ohio. And with the schools that we compete with and our similar groups, that's something to really be proud of. Because the state is holding report card information, we don't have the final results, but we do know we even did better with the results this year. So our PI right now, which is a culmination of all our testing attendance graduation rates, is at one oh seven. And again, we're proud of that. Nine consecutive years with the highest distinction. Something that we don't talk about a lot, but districts are broken up in what would be called subgroups. And that's everything from students on IP's. And again, because of the demographics, we have different cultures and so forth that are in Dublin. And probably our greatest stat, that is, in the last five years, every single subgroup has closed the achievement gap in math and reading. And again, across the board, think about it this way. Our achievement with all students is going up. So to close the achievement gap, those kids also need to be going up. And that's a great success story when you think about about twelve hundred students that we have in the district that come to us without speaking the English language. So again, as a community, that's something that we embrace and we look forward to working with and being proud of. One of the things that continues to, or the pieces of data that continues to increase and do better is the ACT. And obviously, that's that test that gets us into the college that we want, gets us to be accepted in some of the higher-end schools, state schools and states around the nation. Our composite right now, that we just got the results this summer, is twenty-five point one. And if you think about that, students that graduate from any of the three high schools, the average composite for an ACT being twenty-five point one is very strong. And to give you an idea of how that compares, the state average is twenty-one point eight. One other piece of information that I'll give you, and I'll turn it over to Steve here, is think about this. We've got one thousand five hundred and forty-three students that took advanced placement courses this year. That's the highest we've ever had. And out of those students, we had two, over two thousand tests that were scored three or higher, so three, four, or five, which means a college credit. A lot of our students start college as a freshman, I mean, a sophomore. And again, many students are able to waive a credit, which saves parents' dollars. So I point that out because as we go through the reductions, you'll see some of our high-end programs are the ones that are going to take a hit if this levy wouldn't pass. Steve?
Good evening, everyone. I just want to update you a little bit about what you're going to see on the ballot on November sixth. And it's very similar to what was on the ballot last November with one big difference, and that's a reduction in millage. One of the items we heard from our residents after the last November levy was that the amount was too high and it was a bad time from an economic point of view. So one of the big things we've done is reduce this levy request by a little over a mil. So what was seven point nine seven mils last November is six point nine four mils this November. The biggest chunk of that is the operating portion. And as Dr. Axner mentioned, we've increased almost fourteen hundred students over the last five years with decreases in our state funding, decreases in investment revenue, which is no different to what you see. And that challenge goes on with those additional students. The operating levy portion is reduced by point eight mils from seven point two to six point four mils. And the reason we've been able to do that, or the way, is we've made over seven point two million dollars in reductions, and I know many of you saw that, over the last year, that will be in effect actually this year and next year. We spread it over two years. But that, those reductions are permanent. Those are things that will not come back should the levy pass in November. So that is the way we were able to get that operating millage down a little bit. The bond-issue portion dropped from point seven seven mils last November to point five four mils this time. Dollar-wise, it's a drop from twenty-five million to fifteen point eight, almost a ten million dollar drop. And the reason is we took a lot of the bricks and mortar, the building out of that. And what we had heard from our surveys was make do with the facilities that you have right now. So we're still looking at maintenance and equipment and security and technology in the district, but reducing some of the building that was going to go on. So we were able to reduce the bond millage from twenty-five to fifteen point eight, and then the operating is the difference there then. So all of that, then, six point nine four mils on the ballot, cost to taxpayers for every hundred thousand dollars in assessed valuation on your home, it's an additional cost of two hundred and thirteen dollars, and that compares to two hundred and forty-four dollars last November. So a drop of about thirty-one dollars then per hundred thousand. So that's a little synopsis on what the ballot issue is, and I'll let Dr. Axner continue on what some of the reductions would be, would not fail, or not pass.
Steve mentioned a survey that was done. We actually did two post-levy, and I think you'll find it interesting that the number one reason in regards to percentages that people moved to Dublin, they said, was for the school. Forty-nine percent said that. The next highest number was twenty-two percent, and that was because of a job. So again, I think we're definitely in, I know, you know, preaching to the choir here in regards to how critical the school district is. And I think while we're here, and to just spread this information, you know, it does trouble us when we put the list together that you'll see on the back page of the sheet that we passed out there, the green sheet, to quickly look at the reductions. We've got ten million dollars that that page will add up to. And if you look at initially with classified, you're looking at really stripping our buildings down with custodians that are reduced or eliminated, secretaries, building grounds, bilingual aides, and I mentioned, we have twelve hundred students that are ELL, transportation staff, and on. Certified staff, we've got a number of teachers. We start to mesh. We no longer would have a librarian in each elementary school. We'd no longer have a gifted specialist in each elementary school. Those would be shared and obviously reduce the service. So as you see there, that list of everything from counselors to the world languages and the middle schools would be reduced or eliminated. We would once again lose some administrators. We already have reduced two point four million in central office. I know I was only about, in 'oh seven, 'oh eight, six months in the seat, and we reduced five and a half million, started with one million dollars right out of central office. So this now would affect building administrators and assistant principals. If you go down to the last part there, the service pieces, again, I think they're things we're all proud of. One is our high school busing, which we've worked hard, and we heard from surveys and other spots that our high school buses weren't full enough. So we reduced our number of stops. We now have group stops, and the high school buses, as you've probably noticed, are much fuller. But high school busing would be eliminated. Athletics, it was either you greatly increase the pay-to-play or you eliminate sports altogether, at least at the middle school level. So what you'll see is pay-to-participates go from what were around forty to seventy dollars, depending on band, cheerleading, football, and all the other sports, to four hundred, four hundred dollars per activity. And again, you can imagine the strain on the families, but that would be for transportation to games, uniforms, officials, and so on. Supplemental contracts, we lose over a half million dollars of coaches and club advisors. Entry-level sports, we would look at eliminating. And across the board, I think what you'd see is a very different Dublin city school that would not be able to be turned around in some time. And that's critical because people that may not understand school funding, we have a second chance here. You know, we were told the issue is too big and it was a bad time. Well, we can't control the time now. This is our last shot. But I think what we have done is tighten our belt. We've got over fifteen million dollars of reductions, and it's time to get this passed and move on, which if we can do that, that list that I just went over goes away. If this levy were to fail, you're not going to be able to come back in the spring, or even November, and click your fingers and change that, because now collections would be passed all the way back to January fourteen. So we'd have to wait a whole nother year in regards to getting that done. So definite urgency, and again, we just appreciate you having us have an opportunity tonight to speak about the importance. So any questions?
Questions or comments? Anyone?
Well, I guess, make a couple of comments. I saw there was a newspaper article sometime in the last few days about groups on school levy, the whole issue on other communities as well. And of course, we were all, you know, a number of us were surprised a year ago when the levy failed, as there is, I don't recall there being any organized opposition to the levy. But I, I'm concerned over, I've had people even say to me that they don't know enough about the levy still, you know, where we're actually starting to vote this week, you know, at the end of the week is early voting on October second. So how are you educating the public about all of the things that you've just educated us on?
Well, things have dramatically changed from last year. And to give you probably the best example, Lynn May, who's here tonight, is still on the board, stepped down from an officer position and really took the reins in regards to helping on her free time organizing the Good Schools Committee. We got some outstanding chairs. We've gone now with Facebook and Twitter, there's a whole lot of other options in regards to connecting with people. So we've gone, I know we're well over six hundred volunteers, where last time, maybe we had sixty. The other thing is, I will tell you, Mary Lee, even from my standpoint and schedule, as obviously any campaigning has to be done outside of the workday. But I will tell you that this Good Schools Committee has us busy doing two and three events just about every night and weekends. So that, along with a number of mailings that'll be hitting, we definitely, we know October second starts it all, so we've been gearing up for that and raising funds so that we'll be able to get that information out.
The number of neighborhood coffees and meetings with civic associations as well has increased greatly, and that'll be happening a lot over the next couple of weeks as well.
Well, we certainly know that every company that comes here is coming here because of a good school and good options for the employers, employees, that they're trying to draw, you know, to come to work for them and all. And we know what you're saying about the number one reason people choose any community is largely due to their educational system. So, you know, I certainly hope that the public understands that and will support the levy this time.
You know, Mary Lee mentioning that forty-nine percent of people move here because of good schools, it's also our businesses, but also, I think if you were to ask any realtor in town or any banker who values property, that also enhances property values as well.
Yeah, I wanted to add that, too. I think it's horrible to read all of the cuts because I don't think we recognize Dublin schools. And I think that it's really important that all the positive things that you shared, the fact that we have added an entire high school, fourteen hundred students, that's huge. And with no more funding, you know, that we are the 12th-largest district. I didn't know that. You know, I've lived here for twenty years. The fact that we are the highest achieving, the fact that regard, you know, we have all these cultures representative, we have a huge diversity, that's a huge challenge for each building. And the fact that we are able to achieve at such a level, given all those challenges. And I have read and noticed in the paper, the coverage has always been the negative. Well, this is what's going to be taken away. I think if you can get some positive coverage, this is, you know, everything that this district is doing, that would be a great thing, too, because I don't think, unless you have kids in the schools, you have to think a little bit harder and look a little bit harder about everything that goes on. I don't think average Joe Public, maybe if they don't have a kid in the schools, is as aware of all the great things that are happening. And certainly, I had an interesting conversation with a woman, she lives out in Ballantre, and she called me, and she was completely affronted at the dollar amount for property taxes. And of course, that's in the Hilliard School District, but we're very similar. And she said, you know, "I cannot believe the amount that I'm paying in property taxes." And I said, "Yeah, that's true. But where did your kids go to school when you lived in Washington?" And she said, "Well, we went, they went to a private school." And I said, "You don't have to pay private school tuition because you have these incredible schools that are serving your community." So, you know, you can think of it that way. And she said, "You know, you're right. We're spending less." And, you know, and she, you know, is really happy with the quality of the school district. So, you know, and also, I think everybody is a little bit nervous about, you know, two hundred dollars for a hundred thou, that's a lot of money if you look at the average value of a home in Dublin. But when you look at that versus what are the property values going to do if our school district isn't what it is? So I think it's, you know, you can spend money upfront and invest in the community, invest in the school district, keep your property value, keep the resale value of your home, and keep our community great. You know, I think it's pretty easy for folks to vote yes when they think of it that way. So thank you so much for all your work. Thank you, Lynn. I know you've got a huge job ahead, so good luck.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, go ahead.
I just had a couple of questions. How much less state funding has the district perceived as a result of the last state budget?
Just this year, if you look at this year versus five years ago, we are about eight point five million dollars down than where we were at that time.
Eight point five million?
Less. About five point four million is, or five point nine million is reductions in the tangible personal property tax reimbursement. And then another, almost three million in just basic state aid, basic state funding that is usually based on a formula and how many students are in the district, but because of the property wealth in our district, we're guaranteed a certain dollar amount, and it doesn't rise, it doesn't decrease, depending on the enrollment in our district.
And you might have answered what was going to be my next question, and that was my understanding, which is very limited, of the state formula and the extent to which it penalizes, if you will, the so-called wealthier districts. Is that still the case?
Yeah. The difference is, many districts, not naming, but we have some around us that per pupil, you know, per ADM is how that budget is figured, or that amount per child. So I guess what I'm trying to say. So that if a student would move in, or a family with two students, and they would be part of the average daily membership in that district in that fall, that school district would get approximately, well, they'd get a little over five thousand dollars per student. So think about five thousand dollars per student times fourteen hundred over that time, that would be pretty nice. And that would definitely change the number that you have before us now. Unfortunately, Dublin has increased fourteen hundred students and actually have gotten less dollars than, you know, districts that are around us.
Right.
Valuations are so much higher. That certainly will be another challenge we'll be facing as we start the next two-year budget, but the state, if governed in case, it will be introducing a new state funding formula. So that's sure to be some changes there as well.
Right. You mentioned something about potential cuts. You may have seen the article in yesterday's Columbus Dispatch in the sports section. It was in the form of an editorial. The gentleman talked about the value of extracurricular sports and how it builds character and builds lifelong lessons and so forth, and not just athletics, but all extracurricular activities, you know, such as band and so forth. And so, you know, and I think that speaks to, you know, a healthy district. You know, we've certainly seen the effect of cuts in those kinds of programs in other districts. And I don't think that's something that we want to see happen to our district. Southwestern City Schools, for example, was, you know, profiled on, what was it, ESPN or whatever, you know, and not in a positive light as a result of cutting their fall sports a couple of years ago, as a result of not being able to pass levies. So I personally don't have much more to say, you know, with respect to the effect, you know, with respect to a good school system and how, and the effect that it has on the community and the city on a larger scale, you know, beyond what Mary Lee and Rick and Amy had to say. So, you know, certainly wish you the best of luck. And, you know, as I said, I think we all recognize the value of an excellent school system. I think we appreciate the challenge that's in front of you, and it's really amazing what the district accomplishes, given those challenges, which I think a lot of people don't recognize, quite frankly. I think we, you do it so well, and your staff does it so well, you know, that I think one of us up here, you know, said that we probably take it for granted. So thank you for being here this evening. I didn't realize that you had your own meeting this evening. So good luck.
Thanks again for your time.
Moving on in the agenda, we have a proclamation to read. The first one, actually a couple of proclamations, but this proclamation is with respect to something that's going to be occurring at the Dublin Arts Council. It is called "Shifting Perspectives in the Community." And Mr. David Gion, the Executive Director of the Arts Council, if he is here, and then is Mr. Richard Bailey here as well, if you'd both like to come forward. If you'd like to face the camera over here, Mr. Bailey.
I want to first read the proclamation and then ask you gentlemen to make a couple of comments. Excuse me. Proclamation, excuse me, reads as follows. Whereas the Dublin Arts Council will present the exhibition "Shifting Perspectives in the Community" at the Dublin Arts Center from September twenty-seventh through November second, two thousand and twelve. The exhibit timing corresponds with the Observance of National Down Syndrome Awareness Month in October. And whereas, through the lenses of four Ohio photographers and one international photographer, curator, the exhibition will be a celebration of acceptance, capturing the joy and wonder of what it is like to be a human and living with Down Syndrome. And whereas, the photographers will be paired with Down Syndrome individuals, engaging in workshops and discussions, creating images that challenge conventional attitudes and catalyze renewed perception of identity and individuality. The exhibition will focus on the everyday life experience of individuals living with Down Syndrome, and will encourage a sensitive exploration of diversity. And whereas, the Dublin Arts Council previously hosted the U.S. debut of the original U.K. "Shifting Perspectives" in two thousand and eleven, and the exhibit received overwhelmingly positive feedback and unprecedented response. This led to the creation of this new exhibition. And whereas, working in close collaboration with the Down Syndrome Association of Central Ohio and its nationwide affiliates, the exhibition will be underwritten by Cardinal Health and grants from the Dublin Foundation and the Ohio Arts Council. Now therefore, I, Timothy A. Leckleiter, Mayor of Dublin, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby proclaim October two thousand and twelve as Down Syndrome Awareness Month in the city of Dublin, welcoming curator and photographer Richard Bailey back to Dublin and encouraging all citizens to visit the exhibition "Shifting Perspectives in the Community" at the Dublin Arts Center.
Mayor Leckleiter, council members, citizens of Dublin, thank you so very much for your very kind proclamation, which means a great deal to me and to the other Shifting Perspective photographers. When my daughter Billy Joe was born thirteen years ago, we found that there were very few positive images of people with Down Syndrome. There were no images showing family life, there was, or families having fun. There were no images of people with Down Syndrome in the workplace, or in education, or even playing sport. Over the past eight years, Shifting Perspective photographers have looked at all aspects of Down Syndrome and have built up a vast body of work that draws upon many different themes, from intimate family life to showing that DS occurs within every race and culture. From an actress recreating Vermeer paintings to married couples and newborn babies, from parties and footballers to rolling down hills and exploring woods. Society is changing, and people with all kinds of disabilities are now much more part of the mainstream, but there's still a long way to go. People all over the world are now seeing our images, and my hope is that the public will be able to see that people with Down Syndrome have dreams, aspirations, wants, needs, likes and dislikes, just like everybody else. And through these images, they will see an individual rather than just a person with Down Syndrome. And the more we show this, the more accepting society will become, the more opportunities will become available, and the future will can only get brighter for the next generation of children with Down Syndrome. So I would just like to say a very big and heartfelt thank you to David and all of his team at the Dublin Arts Council for bringing Shifting Perspectives back to Dublin, Ohio, and also to the local photographers who've been involved with this, Barb Schwartz, Kate Shannon, Jim Langman, and Hosanna Tecky. They're absolutely fabulous images, and I would urge all of you, if you get the chance, to take a look at the exhibition. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Richard. I appreciate you joining us again for the next installment of the exhibition. We have four Dublin residents who are photo subjects as part of the exhibition, and we're really proud to focus on Dublin, Ohio, as well as the U.K. at this point. So thank you, Richard, for all of your work and for joining us and gracing us with your photographs.
David, you can tell us more about the exhibition, dates and time.
Oh, sure. The dates are, the opening is Thursday, September twenty-seventh, and it goes through November second. The hours of the gallery are Tuesdays from ten to seven, and then Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday from ten to five, and then Saturday from eleven to two.
That's through November, did you say?
Through November second. Through November 2nd.
Thank you very much. You know, I know many of us council members had the opportunity to see this exhibit last year, and I think we were all moved by it. I know I certainly was. It was really amazing, and it really did what you said. I mean, in terms of, at least with respect to my attitude and so forth. And any of the rest of you have a memory of that?
Yeah, I'd like to say this, that, and by the way, tomorrow night is a fundraiser for the opening, and it's from 6:00 to 9:00, and there'll be cocktails. And on your comment, I think, first thing is the educational opportunity of our students to see children with Down Syndrome, living these normal and happy lives. So, the field trips that were taken to that particular art exhibit were fantastic, as far as opening up people's awareness. And then a grandfather was in there and his child had, his new child had Down Syndrome, and he saw that exhibit. He was depressed and confused, and he saw the power of that exhibit and realized, you know, this is going to be a wonderful life for this child. Because it showed what they can do, their potential, and I think it changed him. And so, a lot of power in that exhibit. So, thank you very much.
Steve Langworthy.
We have a proclamation recognizing Community Planning Month. Good evening, Steve. He asked me if I was sure I wanted to read the whole thing. Well, let's give it a go here. Whereas, community planning provides an opportunity for residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas, the full benefits of planning are attained when public officials and citizens understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas, community planning contributes to economic development through the creation of places that attract and retain a skilled workforce and promote business growth, which enhance economic vitality and enrich communities' quality of life. And whereas, the city of Dublin has always placed a high value on the planning process and the importance that community planning has in the city's overall quality of life. And whereas, the adoption of the award-winning Dublin Community Plan in December 2007 represents the product of a successful collaborative effort between citizens, public officials, and staff members in creating a guide for managed growth, increased quality of life, and a prosperous future in the city of Dublin. And whereas, as the five-year anniversary of the community plan's adoption approaches, the city is committed to reinforcing the principles of community planning by amending the community plan to address changing trends, recent development projects, and a variety of new planning initiatives, including the West Innovation District and the Bridge Street District Plans. And whereas, the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. And where the, whereas, excuse me, the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners endorse National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions that sound planning and plan implementation make to the quality of our communities and environment. Whereas, we recognize the many valuable contributions made by the professional community and regional planners across Central, the Central Ohio area, and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now therefore, I, Timothy A. Lecliter, Mayor of the city of Dublin, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2012 as Community Planning Month in the city of Dublin, in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month. Steve?
Thank you. You know, I do this every year, and I was sitting back there thinking that maybe I say the same things every year, and if I say the same things every year, maybe I sound a little insincere. And I want to reassure you that I get up every day thinking the privilege to come to work for a community that values planning so much, and the city council who values so planning so much, and is so progressive in its views. And I wake up every day with the privilege of being able to work with a talented group of, not just our planners, who are very talented and very exciting to work with, but all of our city employees, or from our engineers we work with every day, building department work every day, economic development, streets utilities, all of them we work with every day. It's just a privilege and an honor to really work here. And so, we appreciate this proclamation and recognition of Community Planning Month.
Thanks, Steve. Well, last but not least, for this portion of our agenda, if you haven't already heard, the city of Dublin was named a World Festival and Event City by the International Festival and Events Association. And this particular, well, this organization had its annual meeting in Denver last week and through the weekend, and the awards ceremony took place on Friday in Denver. I attended as well as three city staff members. And Dublin was recognized as the most outstanding global entry for cities with populations of 1 million and below. And Dubai, yes, Dubai, was recognized for populations of 1 million and above. And so, we congratulate Dubai and are proud to share the international stage with that tiny little community on the other side of the world. And certainly recognize what a vibrant lifestyle and economic vitality contribute to the community. This is the actual award that we were presented, and it's certainly a, quite a recognition for Dublin to have received this award. And it was primarily the result of, or recognition of the Dublin Irish Festival. And how fitting, I guess, that we had our 2015 anniversary this year. But certainly, you know, this award is a tribute to our staff, to city council, to our thousands of volunteers over the years, and our sponsors. Also at the conference, we received seven pinnacle awards. You've heard about these in the past. I've heard about these in the past. You know, it was, you know, a good opportunity for me to be there and actually witness, you know, what this is about and what it means to the individual communities that receive these awards. It truly is international. South Korea is really about promoting their festivals, believe it or not. I mean, they really stood out. But we were competing with the likes of the Indianapolis 500 and the festival that they have surrounding that event, the Kentucky Derby. And then all manner of festivals and events across the country and across the world, including Dubai. Certainly, there was another city up north, which shall remain unnamed, that has an Irish festival, but they didn't win the award we did. We won three gold awards for the Irish Festival website, the best TV promotion, which I don't know if you saw the TV promotion. I didn't see it until the festival. They ran a clip of it where the Irish dancers were at the checkout line in a retail environment, you know, in their attire, with all the curls and everything, and they had a pile of curling irons all piled up that were, you know, beeping across the scanner. It was, it was really good. And best social media site. So, congratulations. And Sandra, if you'd like to add to that, I think maybe we have a little clip.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. The, as part of the application, which is also online, go ahead and take a look at it at your leisure, and we're going to have some of those printed as well. We were asked to submit a short video, and one of the reasons that they said they loved the video so much is that it doesn't have words. And so, the images certainly spanned the world. And congratulations to Joe and John from Shared Vision for putting that together.
we were pretty hip, that we had the black-eyed peas in the background. For what that's worth, I guess. I don't know, maybe they had expected Frank Sinatra, I don't know. But anyway, we also had the President's Cup in tow. There was a lot of interest in that, a lot of photographs taken with the President's Cup and so forth. And the tournament folks also provided a trip. Well, actually, it was a drawing. We, we, we had a drawing where there was a trip to the President's Cup, admission and so forth. And Sandra had arranged with the organizers of the conference for us to do our drawing first, because Dubai was doing their drawing after us, and theirs included airfare and, you know, I don't know, four or five days.
Deluxe hotel accommodations, right. $1,500 cash.
$1,500 in spending money.
And gold dust sprinkled on your dessert.
Yeah.
But we, but we have Dublin.
No, no, unfortunately not. I don't know how far $1,500 goes in Dubai, anyway. Anyway. So, really, a lot of interest in the President's Cup, so looking forward to more of that. So, thank you and congratulations to everyone that was involved in this. Moving on to that part of our agenda, for citizens' comments, to any item not on the agenda, Mr. Maurer, if you'd like to come forward.
I am not very steady on my feet tonight. I've come out of two weeks of dealing with an infected left leg, which I won't go into because it looks as if I'm trying to skew your favor. I'm not. But I've come here tonight to stun you. And I'm going to stun you by saying something very nice about each one of you, the city council, and everybody on city management. In the first couple of decades of this country, Washington and Jefferson and Madison, and the first figure, I can't recall at the moment, warned the country absolutely not to go into parties, into the party system at all. Because it would water down thinking about the issues of the country. It would deteriorate into nothing more than name-calling. It would do what you see today, that a billion dollars is spent on one meaningless, empty soundbite during this coming election. And they were right. The country's thinking about nothing, and it's on the brink of sinking. Now, I thought back to the 132 years I've been up here. And I could not recall a single time when any of you, this administration, previous administrations, and city government wasted a single minute. Every minute that I could think of was used to think out legislation, to pass legislation, to govern the city. And there wasn't a minute wasted doing that. So, that's what I want to congratulate you about. And it's a horrible contrast when you look at what you've done every minute of the years since this city came to existence, and the way the country's a hole is going down the brink because it can't think. Nothing, nothing offered to it to think. So, I hope that sort of added to the accolades you were getting this evening. I think it's a very, very serious business. Tipper Neil was right when he said, politics is local. Politics in a bad sense and a good sense is local. And I, you've stuck to that because I remember some of the city politicians, some of the politicians outside of this city at times wanted to muscle in on your elections, on our elections here. And I remember them being told, in no uncertain terms, you stay out of us. We have our elections. As it turns out, the elections you have and the talk you do about what you're going to do is substantive. How many of you have heard of the project called Project Boat Smart? They, which is done by hundreds of volunteers who look into the background of every politician in the country. And there's an interesting opening category when they ask the politician, do you consider yourself a reliable politician? And every one of them that I've looked up so far has said, no, because he knows and she knows that this enterprise has listed all the votes on all the issues that have been taken. And they know they're a loser if they say yes. So, there you are. I am happy to be able to say that. And I don't see any reason why this won't go on, that it'll be minute after minute of intelligence. Thank you. I have to leave now because I'm not steady on my feet.
Well, thank you, Mr. Maurer. We appreciate it. Moving on then to the consent agenda portion of our, tonight's agenda, I would ask if there is any council member who wishes to remove any of the six items listed on tonight's consent agenda. Hearing no response, I would move that we approve the actions requested for the six items listed on tonight's consent agenda. Is there a second? Thank you. Ian, if you call for the vote?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zirkur?
Yes.
Mrs. Boring?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saley?
Thank you very much. Moving on then to second readings, beginning with ordinance 53-12.
Authorization the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documentation to acquire a 2.085 acre, more or less fee simple interest from Northern Dream Builders Corp.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Hammersmith.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. We have before you this evening, in accordance with the staff report, another acquisition for the Emerald Parkway Phase 8 project. Slide is up on the screen, referencing the property owned by Northern Dream Builders. It is actually two parcels, one at 4052 Bright Road and the other at 4030 Bright Road. Initially, these were just acquisition of right-of-way, but given the effects on the property after the road construction, it was determined, in working with the property owners, to acquire the entire parcels for an amount equal to $390,000. Both parcels combined are just over two acres. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none.
It is actually two parcels, one at 4052 Bright Road and the other at 4030 Bright Road. Initially, these were just acquisition of right-of-way, but given the effects on the property after the road construction, it was determined, in working with the property owners, to acquire the entire parcels for an amount equal to $390,000. Both parcels combined are just over two acres. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Anyone have any questions? Hearing none. If you call for the vote, please, Ian.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan. Ms. Tennessee Zirker.
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh. Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter. Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Keenan.
Ordinance 58-12.
Yes.
Designating eligible financial institutions as public depositories. Mr. Gerber.
Yes, good evening, Ms. Mulla.
Yes.
Good evening, members of council.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Ordinance 58-12 is a routine piece of legislation that comes before you every five years.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 54-12.
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documentation for the
The city is required, under Ohio Revised Code, to designate formally the financial
acquisition of a 0.784 acre with 0.355 acres as present road occupied, more or less fee simple interest, a 0.195 acre, more or less permanent utility, and drainage easement
institutions that will act as depositories for public funds.
and a 0.125 acre, more or less temporary construction.
Those nine institutions are listed in your piece of legislation.
Easement from Morello Lion.
Thank you. Mr. Hammersmith.
Also noted in your staff report is just the fact that the city is going to be undergoing
Mayors and members of council, we have another acquisition this evening with a different project, that being for the Highland-Croye Bran Road Roundabout.
an analysis of our current banking relationship with J.P. Morgan Chase.
This acquisition is located at 7,500 Mitchell-Dewitt Road, a property owned by the Lions, Mrs.
That is where we have our active deposits. Basically, the funds are needed for our daily operations, just to check and make sure that
Lyon, as a matter of fact.
we're getting the best possible rate that's out there compared to other banks.
We are acquiring both permanent right-of-way, proposed permanent easements, and then temporary
Any questions, comments?
construction easements. We've been negotiating this for quite some time with the Lions and have settled on a
Thank you. Hearing none, Ian, if you call for the vote, please.
total compensation of $43,363.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
This is, in terms of permanent right-of-way, just over four-tenths of an acre in acquisition.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zirker.
This is our last acquisition associated with this project, and so we will be in a position
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
to move towards construction, and we're anticipating that for next year.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Any questions?
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Hearing none.
Yes.
Thank you. Ian, if you call for the vote, please. Ordinance 58-12.
Mr. Gerber. Designating eligible financial institutions as public depositories.
Yes.
Yes, good evening, Ms. Mulla.
Mrs. Boring.
Good evening, members of council.
Yes.
Ordinance 58-12 is a routine piece of legislation that comes before you every five years.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zirker.
The city is required, under Ohio Revised Code, to designate formally the financial institutions that will act as depositories for public funds. Those nine institutions are listed in your piece of legislation. Also noted in your staff report is just the fact that the city is going to be undergoing an analysis of our current banking relationship with J.P. Morgan Chase. That is where we have our active deposits. Basically, the funds are needed for our daily operations, just to check and make sure that we're getting the best possible rate that's out there compared to other banks.
Any questions, comments? Thank you. Hearing none, Ian, if you call for the vote, please.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zirker.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Ordinance 59-12.
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documentation to acquire a 23.469 acre, more or less fee simple interest, from Charles W. Matthews, Jr., Kimberly K. Matthews-Ross, Diana C. Lowry Trustee, Dan E. Lowry Trustee, Kimberly K. Ross, and Diana C. Lowry, in appropriating necessary funds therefore.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. O.
Good evening. The city has been in negotiation for approximately 24 acres of additional parkland located on the east side of Riverside Drive, just north of Hard Road and south of Wyandotte Woods Boulevard. In the terms of the sales, for this acreage is a price point of $910,000, which is just under $39,000 an acre. There are some contingencies in the real estate agreement that need to be satisfied by the current owner. From the administration's perspective, this is a good complement to our existing land masses, publicly owned either by the city or the school district in this portion of the community. And this particular piece of land has some nice features to it, particularly with the topography, that will be great for preservation, and we're recommending adoption of this resolution and use of parkland acquisition dollars for it. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I just had a quick question on the conditions. Are you referring to the ones listed on page one, under conditions precedent, which appear to be all related to us?
Yes. The seller did not have any additional conditions that they chose to negotiate.
Thank you.
Were there any kind of storage tanks or anything on this site at one point to ask for that environmental?
We will be, we're in the process of getting a phase-one analysis done. We, the owners, have had the property for approximately 50 years and have indicated they have not. There have not been any structures built in the recent 50 to 100 years that we're aware of on the property.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Ian, if you call for the vote, please.
Ms. Tennessee Zirker.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zirker.
Yes.
And Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Moving on to resolutions, resolution 55-12.
Appointing a member to the personnel board of review.
All right.
I will introduce it and ask council to recall our interview with Mr. Shawn Campbell last spring. And I spoke with Mr. Campbell a couple of weeks ago, and he said that he would be eager to serve on the personnel board of review. And so, I would nominate that, or, I'm sorry, move that we appoint Shawn Campbell to the unexpired term on the personnel board of review.
Thank you. Ian, if you call for the vote, please.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zirker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution 56-12.
Accepting the amounts and rates and authorizing tax levies.
Introduction, please.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Ms. Mulla.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Once again, I'm bringing before you this evening another routine piece of legislation that comes before you annually. We are required by the Franklin County Budget Commission to accept the amounts and rates and authorizing tax levies. Specifically, what this piece of legislation does is authorizes the inside millage to be distributed with .35 mills going towards the parkland acquisition fund. That was discussed during our 2013 through 2017 CIP process. Additionally, 1.4 mills will go into the capital improvement tax fund. And then, the voted millage, the 1.2 mills, will continue to be allocated towards the police safety fund. With that, I will answer any questions.
Any questions, comments?
What's the actual collection rate on the police levy, just out of curiosity?
Sure. For residential property owners, it's .204 mills. And for commercial, it's .311.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ian, if you call for the vote, please.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zirker.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 57-12.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Dublin Arts Council for the provision of cultural arts services and amending Exhibit B of the lease agreement previously executed by the parties.
Introduction, please.
Mayor, I'd like to introduce it, but I'd like to postpone the vote till our October the 8th meeting. The DAC would like to hold a special meeting. They were unable to discuss this in their meeting of September the 11th.
I have a question on that because, as it appeared, it appeared that we were going to go ahead and vote on it tonight, whether the DAC did or not. So, I'm questioning, would it be necessary for us to postpone it? If we went ahead and voted on it now, and then if the Arts Council voted on it, then it'd be done. We wouldn't have to see it again. If not, if they said, "We'd like to make changes," they can come back to us. But the way I saw it tonight, we were going to vote on it, rather they hadn't had the chance to vote on it anyway. So, I believe we ought to vote on it tonight, and they will know how we stand. And then, if they don't like it, they can come back to us. But if they do, it's a done deal.
Catherine, in my conversations with the Dublin Arts Council, I think this is really more of a courtesy. They haven't really had the chance to really present it to any of the members yet. And talking to the head of the Dublin Arts Council, he stated that he sees no problem with changing any part of it. And I think it's more of like a courtesy to let their board at least review it and pass, judge, you know, approve it. But I don't see any problem with them actually changing the contract. So, I think it's more of just a courtesy to let them get it done, since they didn't really have a chance to even discuss it at their September the 11th meeting. So, they're just asking us, we would just set it aside for a couple of weeks.
So, it's on your agenda for tomorrow night?
They have, they're going to call a special meeting, I understand.
So, it's not tomorrow night? Because I thought our calendar said there was an Arts, oh, well, it can't be an Arts Council Board meeting.
Tomorrow night is the...
Because there's a event. Right. Yeah.
I thought it had to go to committee and then to the Arts Council Board. And I agree with Kathy. As far as I'm concerned, we'll vote for it. I'm really kind of tired of being courteous, to tell you the truth.
Yeah, I am.
This is like four or five years of this.
And this can let them know, this is what we are presenting and we agree on. Hopefully, they will look at it and recommend to their board, they vote on it, and then it's done.
John, I have one question, if I may, Mr. Mulla. If their committee decides to change some of the language, comes up with something else, is there a mechanism in place where your committee reviews this, makes a recommendation before staff, before council receives this back in October?
Yeah. You know, really, Rick, in all fairness, I did talk to Dave, and he said that, you know, there's nothing they really want to change. They're in agreement with the contract, and actually, they're very happy with it. So, I think this is just a courtesy to let their board review it and see what was discussed at that meeting, since they weren't all present at the meeting. And I think that's really where we're at with this. So...
And when would we expect for it to be back to us on our agenda?
On the October the 8th meeting.
On our October 8th meeting?
The next meeting.
Our next meeting?
Yeah.
So, the special meeting's already been set.
Yeah. And this is just a postponement, I think.
Well, I mean, I'm trying to get definitive answers here because of our experience, and is that they're going to set a meeting. So, we're two weeks away from our next meeting. So, they have on the calendar a meeting where whoever's interested from their board will come and review it and make any suggestions.
Yes, that's supposedly what they're going to do.
And then, the board has to vote on it.
Which means you're into November, then.
Yep.
Which is what I read in the original memo.
Yep. Which is what he had originally said, he believed would be the issue, because they, you know, they had a lot of people present at our meeting, so you would think that, had there been any major concerns, they would have been addressed pretty quickly following that meeting. But that's the way I understood it too, John, was that it would not go to formal vote of their board until November. So, does that prohibit us from passing it, whether it's tonight or in an October 8th meeting? If they're not even formally voting on it from their board?
It doesn't prohibit us from passing it. And based upon the discussions that we've had with the representatives from the Arts Council, we don't believe there are going to be any changes. And so, the discussion today was, would we consider not passing the legislation this evening and wait until the next meeting? And it's my understanding that they plan on having, it's either a committee meeting where they're going to discuss it. They would just like to have that discussion prior to our adoption. It's not something that we have to do. I don't know that it would make any difference at this point if we passed it tonight or at the next meeting, so I don't think there's any harm in waiting to the next meeting. And I would say, at that point, if they've not had their internal discussions, that we move forward.
Well, even if they have, so, in terms of just the process, they're going to have a committee meeting before October 8th. They're going to communicate to yourself and staff their results of that committee meeting. We then are going to get a memo saying, "Nothing's been changed," or, "This is what they recommended, and this is our position on whatever they ask for."
Yes.
So, we will make a definitive, we will take a definitive vote on October 8th.
Yes. And that's the message that we've discussed with them. And I, and we don't need to wait to adopt it until they adopt it, but if we give them the ability to have their final review and get back with us, and then we would anticipate, and that's why we're just asking for a postponement until the next council meeting.
Personally, I don't mind extending the courtesy, but I'm also of the mindset that I am not interested in negotiating any further.
And I think that message has been discussed with representatives from the Arts Council.
I did have, I've had a discussion with them.
I didn't appreciate having a committee of the whole to come out here and negotiate with these folks, you know, four weeks ago or whenever.
Yeah. And they could have called a special meeting then.
Yeah. And I mean, that was rather torturous to go through that, and frankly, I thought that was somewhat offensive and a waste of our time.
Yeah.
So, anyway, I'm going to grant the courtesy, but, you know, no more.
Okay.
In addition to that, I just want to say, I'm sure that everybody agrees with this, but I'm just going to say it for myself, that we definitely need to have an annual formal time that, at a minimum, the staff of the city and the staff of DAC review the document, and there is documentation that that has occurred. And, you know, if there's any major changes, of course, requested, then that would go to the leadership of both groups. But we cannot wait another 10 years and get into the situation that we got into this time.
And we really, we already have a meeting set up in October. So, we're going to do a, was it four times a year, Marcia? We're going to do this, meet with these guys.
Yeah, we talked about having quarterly discussions and also, you know, with David coming to City Council, similar to the Bureau, to provide updates.
This attachment here, Exhibit A, this redline version, is this ours or theirs?
This is ours.
Okay. I would just point out, Sarah and Steve, if you double-check me, but on the last page, the signature page, I think it's Title VII and not Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. And I don't know whether, I mean, the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990 has been amended. I don't know if you want to put as amended. Okay. All right. With that, I would second John's motion to table. Ian, if you call for the vote, please.
Mrs. Boring.
No.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
I'll vote no.
Ms. Tennessee Zirker.
Yes.
And Mayor Lecliter.
Yes. Thank you all.
All right, then. Moving on to the so-called other portion of our agenda, there's a request for a fee waiver, Mr. Sastre de Versula. I apologize if I'm mispronouncing that. You can remain seated for just a minute, sir, if you would. If you would remain seated for just a minute, please.
Let me sit.
I understand. If you would sit down for just a minute, please.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. I think we're going to have a staff report, please. Thank you, sir. I think we just got this at our place this evening, so we need a little background, I think, but at least I do.
Sure. The property located at 5734 Dally Mount Drive was initially inspected by our code enforcement department on May 3rd. And at that point in time, it was found not to be in compliance with the city's code[1669.21] not being in compliance with the city's code with respect to weeds and grass. And at that time, notification was provided to the property owner that they needed to rectify their situation and bring their property into compliance by May tenth. Subsequent inspection by our Code Enforcement Division did indicate that this property was brought into compliance, and then periodically through the course of the summer, it was re-inspected, and again, each time found to be in compliance. However, on or about, hold on a moment here while I get my dates out. On or, on or about the first part of August, August first specifically, the property was inspected once again and was found to no longer be in compliance, and as such, the city proceeded at that point with hiring a contractor to mow the weeds or mow the property. The city incurred a seventy-dollar charge from the independent contractor that was hired. No notification was sent to the property owner at that point in time because pursuant to Dublin Codified Ordinance, Section ninety-five point two-two, a property owner or the Code Enforcement Officer shall cause written notice to be served once each growing season to the property owner. So, no further notification went from the Code Enforcement area. Then it gets turned over to the Finance Department once those costs are incurred, and that seventy-dollar expense that the city incurred, plus a three-hundred-and-fifty-dollar service charge, was assessed on the property owner. On August thirty-first, the Finance Department issued an invoice to the property owner for that total of four-hundred-and-twenty dollars. No contact was made by the property owner at that point in time, and, and a second notice was then sent on September seventh stating that the amount was still currently due. On September tenth, I received a notification from the property owner that, I believe you have a copy that was presented to you this evening, requested a waiver of the three-hundred-and-fifty-dollar service charge based on the fact that they were out of the country due to a family emergency. After reviewing the case file, I made the recommendation to the city manager that the request should be denied. She upheld that decision, and as such, we notified the property owner through a letter sent via certified mail, as well as regular mail, that that request was denied and the four-hundred-and-twenty dollars was payable, and that he did have the option to come before council to request waiver of, of those fees, which brings us here to this evening.
Thank you. Yes, sir, if you state your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, Mayor and Dublin City Council, I'm Sastri Dursula, five-seven-three-four Dally Mount Drive. I mean, as explained, I mean, I, I was out of the country during July-August timeframe for a family emergency, all our family members were out of the town, and we engaged a, I mean, we engaged a person to take care of the lawn, but something went wrong, and it looks like it was not taken care of, and, and upon my return, I found that, I found a notice and, and an invoice subsequently. I'm requesting, as a first mistake, if it could be waived, this, I mean, I'm ready to pay the seventy dollars, but if you could waive the three-hundred-and-fifty-dollar service fee, that would be great. That's why I'm here this evening.
Did, did staff do any investigation, you know, with respect to who the gentleman claims that he engaged, or have you provided any evidence of who it was that you engaged?
I mean, it's like, we, we engaged a boy in the street, you know, like our neighbor, so we told him to watch and take care of the lawn.
This, you say that you, you made arrangements with a young man in your neighborhood to cut the grass?
Neighborhood, yes.
And he simply didn't do it?
I'm sorry?
And he simply didn't do it?
Me, me, yeah, it looks like, he might have, I think he did for some time, but he, he might have missed it, so I don't know what happened, so upon my return, I found this notice.
And the one thing that we also look at is to try to be consistent, because this, we have a similar instance where there was a, a business that was to take care of the mowing, and that didn't occur. And so, one of the things where we recognize the difficulty, and when you're out of town and relying upon somebody else, but it is not something really that the city is responsible for, and we did provide pictures of this to show that, you know, we, we're not talking about a few weeds, so we, we feel that, that it's appropriate to deny the request.
Marcia, if I may, the, the fee here involves the actual certain cost of cutting the grass, is it correct?
Yeah.
It's not, it's not a penalty, it's a...
Seventy dollars.
The seventy dollars is the actual fee that we're charged, and then the remaining fee, the administrative fee, is based upon the cost study that's done each year, and it takes into account all the cost of the Code Enforcement as it relates to, to this area, and recognizing the number of times that we do have to go out and inspect and re-inspect properties.
I have a question about, it was a dry summer. I'm curious, how long does it typically take to grow this high?
You know, sometimes it, it's amazing, the weeds will have a tendency, if, if nothing else grows, it seems like they do, and you can go by an area that one week looks okay, and the next week, there, it's amazing how much it has grown. So, I, I don't know exactly, you know, what period of time, but you can see, based upon the information that's in the memo, that we did inspections on a pretty regular basis throughout the summer, so it shouldn't have been at least no later than between July eighteenth and August one.
Okay.
And, and how were we made aware of this? Were, were there neighbors that contacted the city? Or was this a drive-by?
The records that the Finance Department really receives does not indicate how the initial inspection was, the cause of the initial inspection, I don't know if, in this particular case, we could find out for you, I apologize that we don't have that for you this evening, we could find out what the cause was.
But, but they had already been cited in May?
Yes.
So, it's not like there wasn't already an issue here?
Right.
Regardless of how we might have become knowledgeable about it.
I guess I'm certainly not unsympathetic to your plight, but I'm concerned about setting a precedent, because we have, you know, a lot of time devoted to keeping our community presentable, and it is each homeowner's responsibility, and I, what I would encourage you to do, I mean, if it were me, I certainly would pay this bill, and then I'd share it with the neighbor who was supposed to be taking care of it.
I mean, I, I want the responsibility, I say that I'm responsible, but what I'm saying is that the first mistake, if you could waive, that would be great, that's all. Only, I'm only making a request. Yes, I agree that, because I've been living there for eight years now, you know, like, I mean, so I'm, I'm taking care of the lawn, and I'm a law-abiding citizen, so I'm just, I may request in the City Council, if you could, you know, waive that for me, I mean, I'm ready to pay that seventy dollar, whatever, but the penalty, the three-hundred-and-fifty dollars, that's all I'm here.
Well, Merrily, I, I tend to agree with you, I mean, it looks like that staff was first notified of this, well, he was notified back in May third, and, and so, this has been going on all summer, all spring and all summer.
He didn't come into compliance at that time, if I recall.
That's correct. And so, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
And we, once, once we get a complaint on a property, then we do continue follow-up inspections, just to make sure that the property stays in compliance.
Someone make a motion.
Rick, make a motion.
Just, just one last comment, I, I just have to say, and, and I can appreciate you encountered unforeseen circumstances, but when I see some of these images, if I was your neighbor, I, I would be outraged, you know, regardless of, you know, the circumstances which led to the lawn looking like this, you know, I, I can't imagine having this next door to my home or anybody else's home, for that matter. So, whether it was a, you know, failure in communication, or what have you, but anyway.
So, I make, I just wanna make the motion based on the evidence, and I, and I do empathize with you, and I think it is your obligation, though, before you leave home, to guarantee that somebody's gonna take care of your property, and even if you're out of the country, that you re-contact somebody back here and say, you know, or your neighbors and say, was my property maintained, or is it being taken care of, especially if you're gone for an extended people period, like eighty days? So, you know, I'm gonna vote for the denial of the waiver.
Second.
What, what's the motion? I'm sorry, I didn't hear John.
To deny the waiver request.
So, I guess, I guess we'll be denying the request.
That's correct.
Supporting the recommendation, the staff.
Ian, if you call for the vote?
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Luckleyter?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mrs. Boring?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Moving along to the, the last item on our agenda is the proposed two thousand thirteen regular meeting schedule. Marcia, do you have any comment?
No.
All right.
Strictly council's pleasure.
I had, I think it was with respect to, yeah. There was one date, I just didn't understand the, oh, it's right there in January. The January ninth, alternate date for a council meeting, that Wednesday? What, what would the rationale for that be?
Well, I think based upon the information that's reflected on, January seventh is, January seventh is the national championship game, and so I think that was looked at as an issue that's come up in the past.
But our meetings are second and fourth anyway, regular meetings.
Yeah, in order to avoid football games, we've always had, we've changed it to second and forty Monday.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it was, it was that, that if you wanted to meet earlier in the year to get, in that second week, to look at the ninth instead of doing the Monday.
Maybe because there would have been so much time between the previous meeting in December? Is, is that a problem at all?
Typically not.
Typically not, okay. That's the only thing that jumped out at me, anyone else?
On June, and also July.
Could I go back just a minute, then? To April?
Where, where are we, April or?
April. The first meeting in April. Ian has noted on our calendar that the Final Four is on April sixth. That's just the semifinals, championship game would be on the eighth.
Oh, my gosh.
I'm just saying.
Those games don't start till nine o'clock, and hopefully we're...
Or nine twenty, nine twenty to be exact, I think.
Okay.
But who's keeping track?
What was the week, are they going to the first?
No, I'm not, I'm just pointing it out, if it was an issue for anybody.
When does baseball season start?
Yeah, the World Series is coming up, I think.
No, I'm...
The reason this was brought up is because we've adjusted the calendar for the football finals, and I think, in all fairness, that that's one of the reasons it's being brought up tonight.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with the eighth, I just don't, I wouldn't want us to get to late March and, and be moving this date, so I just, I'm just pointing it out, that's all.
Try to stay away from the day after Easter for travel.
I'm sorry?
Try to stay away from the day after Easter for travel.
Which is when?
April.
April first.
Well, it's still the second.
It's April when?
April first is the day after Easter.
Oh, okay, very good, well, let's move on, as Merrily suggested.
Now, where is the June?
To June and July.
Well, you did come into that problem of balance.
So, if we meet on the twenty-fourth, and we meet again on the first, I'm assuming we just have an extremely light agenda?
Yes, lightly relieved.
And that is not...
Required to meet once per month.
Yeah, it's, we are required to meet once per month. I don't think the third is necessarily a good alternative, so we could just look forward to a light agenda.
I think last year, what, and Mayor, I think you suggested it, is in order to balance things out, we did switch the meetings in June to the other Mondays, so that we would have two weeks between the June meeting and the July meeting.
So, you're suggesting the June third and seventeenth?
I'm suggesting we look at it.
Okay.
I don't, I really don't have any preference.
I guess I would like us to stick to the second and fourth. It is immediately following the tournament, the tournament will be a more comprehensive engagement by the city this year, as we move into the President's Cup, and I, I wouldn't want the staff to still have, you know, to be concerned about, or us, as we would be encouraged to participate perhaps in more activities during the Memorial Tournament this year as a result of the President's Cup.
Yeah, I agree, I think just keeping consistent with our second and fourth.
That's fine.
Makes it easy.
That's fine. The July, Amy, you're suggesting the first?
Yeah, I would...
Which I think's fine, I'd rather do that than on a Wednesday right before the holiday.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so as proposed?
Yes.
We're good?
Yeah, as we get closer to goal-setting, we'll pick a date, but if you guys could maybe hold those dates open on your calendars, if at all possible, and...
And then, I did have a question, though, about August. Why do we not have our meetings on the twelfth and twenty-sixth? And have a meeting on Wednesday in August?
Yeah, that's a good question, because of the Irish Festival.
Well, I know, but the second, the twelfth is the second, when's, I mean, second Monday?
Right.
So, that it doesn't bother us.
I'm sorry, the CIP meeting on the twelfth?
I know, but that could be changed to the seventh, then, so that we're not changing our council meeting?
Right.
From Monday, is what I'm saying, so that our council meeting would be the twelfth and the twenty-sixth, and the CIP meeting, which is easier to change, since the public generally doesn't participate in that, can be changed to whatever date you want.
Yeah, we could use it for the nineteenth?
Yeah, how about the nineteenth instead of, keep things on a Monday, is that possible?
That's fine, I mean, fine with me, I agree.
Yep. Could you, what was that again?
So, the twelfth will be a council meeting, the nineteenth will be the CIP meeting, and the twenty-sixth will be a council meeting.
Perfect.
And then I assume that the quarterly review would be moved to the twelfth also?
The quarterly review will be moved to the nineteenth.
Right. The Finance Committee...
Finance Committee meeting is meeting on the nineteenth.
Okay.
We would have it on the twelfth, we could have it on the twelfth at the council meeting.
Yeah, why don't we do it at the council meeting?
Yeah, we could do that, that makes sense.
The only reason we put the meeting proposed date on the seventh was because of the, the long gap from July first, that was...
Eric, that is a long gap.
I still, it's, it's easier for...
Four more days.
Second and fourth, to be consistent.
Okay. So, if there's nothing else, I would move that we adopt the schedule as proposed, with the changes in August to council meetings on August twelfth and the twenty-sixth, and a CIP meeting on August nineteenth.
Second.
Thank you. Ian, if you call for the vote?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Luckleyter?
Yes.
Mrs. Boring?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan? Ms. Janice Zerker?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Any staff comments?
Just one quick update, last Thursday, the Policy Committee of Morpsey adopted a resolution establishing the priorities for Central Ohio for the projects that are submitted to the Transportation Review Advisory Council, which is where the funding for the ODOT projects are reviewed and awarded, and the city's I-270-33 project was identified as a priority project for Central Ohio, we were identified as priority number three.
I'm sorry, what was the number?
Priority number three. The one good thing, though, they did talk about, all three projects are considered the cream of the crop in Central Ohio, and we had tremendous support from not only our residents, we had a record number of emails that were submitted, there were over a hundred and eighty emails, they said they've never had that kind of response before. We had numerous letters from residents, and then we also had letters that were submitted from the Columbus Chamber, the Columbus Partnership, and Ohio Health supporting our project, and this Thursday morning, Jeanne Willis and I will be attending the, the track meeting, we have an opportunity for about ten minutes of, of comments with regard to our project. So, we feel pretty good about where we are in the project, and it's receiving a lot of continued support, and we've had continued meetings with ODOT, and so we're hopeful that our track request will receive approval and additional funding for this project.
What were the other two projects?
The first project, the priority, is the Rickenbacker Intermodal, and actually, it was not a request for additional funding, it was just a, a request to move it from tier two to tier one, I believe, and then the other project was the seventy-one-seventy-three-fifteen interchange downtown. It was priority two.
Thank you. Mike, you wanna lead off roundtable? Thanks, Rick? Thank you. John?
I'm just curious, I had a number of citizens ask me about the bonds, they were interested in purchasing our bonds, and did anybody find out what the rate was? Because that was the other question I really couldn't answer.
Well, Angel can address.
We actually had an open house on September eleventh, in which we had about twelve residents come out to the Dublin Rec Center and speak to RW Baird about our bond sale. We priced our bonds last Tuesday, and I believe, as it turned out, we had three individuals from the community purchase our bonds. The rate structure varies depending on what year. At, at the point in time that the bonds were, before they priced, they had an estimate of what the range was going to be, I will tell you, our all-in cost was two-point-five-two percent, so very low, but from a, from a investor standpoint, the rate ranged from two percent up to three-point-two-five percent.
Great, thank you very much. The other comment, I, I don't know if you read in your, this is, if you think about it, it's almost crazy what we do here in the city, it's so interesting and so positive, and it's a compliment, of course, to the staff and to the City Council, but if you read your note, that was in the last meeting package, you could charge up your electric car while you were working... But if you read your note, that was in the last meeting package, you could charge up your electric car while you were working out at the rec center. So we're actually providing you free fuel for your car. And if you take that one other step, you, you can buy gas in Dublin, Ohio, CNG, of course, for $1.99 a gallon. And then you look at the federal government. We had an opportunity to, when we had control of Chrysler and GM, to say, hey, you know, 5% of your, or 10% of your production over the next two years, and up it, and in four years will be CNG. And the stimulation, it would have caused our economy in pipes, drilling, revamping gas stations. It's just amazing that this little city, and it is a compliment to all of you, thinks so far ahead on so many of these big issues. And I'm really, I'm really proud of what we've done and what, you know, what our staff has really planned out. It's pretty amazing. So you're looking at fuel costs at really ridiculous levels. So, and fuel costs that are very environmentally oriented, when people are complaining about the environment and air quality. And this little town is way ahead of about everybody else, so again, congratulations. And that's it, thank you.
Thanks, John. Merrilee?
I have a few questions on the other materials that were in our packet. I appreciate the PrAC minutes, which appear to be very thorough and a kind of a robust agenda, which is great. Under community gardens, the chair asked about an update, and there was no update to be given. Can you tell us something about community gardens and where are they? And how, how can we participate in that? And are we expanding so that more? I think that was the issue that PrAC was trying to deal with.
In a memo in our next packet?
Yeah, I'd have to defer to Fred. I don't know the update on that. I'm not aware that we currently have any, that the city sponsors, I know the township, they've had community gardens for the last couple of years. And this is something that we're just starting to look at as far as what neighborhood parks or where we may want to place the community gardens. But I'd have to defer to.
Because the minutes say that they discussed an idea of having a larger community garden, which implies we have one.
Amy made the great suggestion of wait until the next meeting, but Michelle Crandall is working on it with the chair, has met with the chair of PrAC, Steve Stidham. And so I think the intention is to figure out the idea whether it should be one community garden or multiple, smaller community gardens throughout the city. And something is going to be proposed in the 2013 operating budget regarding that. But to have anything real specific on what I'm just saying, I think we really need to wait for the next meeting.
All right, thank you. The memo regarding the historic Dublin Town Water Pump Sculpture, which looks pretty exciting. I was kind of curious though, with the design including children, when none of the pictures that were provided to us really had children in them. But then the narrative says Dublin's, you know, passed in a personal way by engaging in the daily ritual of collecting water with village children. Is that, I was curious as to where did we learn that? And why that's now the emphasis of the water pump?
We have photo documentation of that.
Because Carl Carr never discussed that. The picture that Carl was always showing us, and I thought that his interest in bringing it forward was really more, you know, an adult kind of version of it.
I've spoken with Carl many times over the past several months, and he's quite excited. He actually assisted in commissioning of the maquette that you see pictured on the front that features two children, and was engaged with the artist in that conversation. The Historical Society has been very open to that as well, as trying to make this something that's very touchable and real, particularly given that schoolchildren usually in the third grade tour Historic Dublin as part of their curriculum, and giving them an opportunity to sort of have that personal relationship with the artwork that they might not have if it's all adults.
And what was the timeframe of, it'll be installed by the end of next October, is that?
That's what we're shooting for. We hope to start sculpting in about two weeks at the rec center.
I like that aspect of it, where everybody's going to be able to watch it develop. That was pretty cool.
That is an excellent idea. I really like that a lot. Good job.
On the Southwest Dublin area development, which is, really appreciate that document as well. What do we know about where, where we are at, where Columbus is now at with their decision making?
We had a representative from Plank Park go to the Columbus meeting and put in our letter of protest for the rezoning. And it was apparent that some of the questions we raised and some of the questions that even staff had in their memo, raised some questions with the Columbus folks, and they tabled that application. We don't have any indication as to when they may bring that off the table, however.
If I saw that. Thank you. You know, this is, to me, I, I'm nervous about how, that we need to stay really on top of this. Quick, you know, because I think that they would put it on their agenda, get it through without any other public, from us at least, discussion about the concerns that we have. Were they, I saw that in the minutes of what you're saying. Did the, were the staff then instructed by their commission to do A, B, and C, or to bring back to them anything? Or just?
No, just simply a tabling. We assumed that that direction would take place somewhere else.
Yeah, that, that's what concerns me. So they didn't, I don't know what their process is generally, like ours, we would give instruction to come back. But I don't know if that's their normal process or?
They did say we need to look at these things in terms of the network, in particular, having a transportation network that works prior to having this kind of development take place. So that was an encouraging comment, at least, that they understand what the difficulties are.
One thing I would be interested in would be our staff's analysis of sort of, at what point, you know, I, I think that we need to make good decisions for Dublin in terms of this infrastructure that is going to be needed ultimately. You know, what would be the impact if we would choose not to invest in Tuttle Crossing Boulevard extension at this point in time? You know, what if we don't do anything with Avery Road? How, how is this all going to impact our community and our road network? I'd like a more substantive, I guess, analysis of that, so that we're able to make decisions, you know, for us versus, you know, at the behest of the city of Columbus deciding to put, you know, some big, ungainly development down there that, that, you know, isn't going to necessarily fit in with the road network that they have, let alone with what we have planned.
Jeanne Willis did a really good analysis of that for our use before we went down to Columbus in some of our internal meetings we've had too, so we can share that.
Yeah, I guess I'd, you know, be interested in that analysis. And, you know, hopefully we can have a discussion about what we're interested in. And we might be able to send a letter to this, you know, with our intention to the city of Columbus. And, you know, it flies in the face of everything that we tried to do, as you know, I'm speaking to the, preaching to the choir with regard to the Hayden Road Corridor Plan and what they said they wanted to do and what we said we were interested in. It's, you know, completely flies in the face of that, and that's a disappointment. I think it would be nice to have a communication, you know, directly from our council to theirs, letting them know that we kind of think they're dropping the ball.
Absolutely.
I like that idea.
Yes, I think that's fine.
Merrilee, anything else?
I have one other thing on the information on the private streets, which is something that I had asked for earlier in the year. I'm actually very concerned over this memo, because I'm told where I live is a private street. And here in this memo, it says there's only four private streets in the city because of the narrow interpretation, really, of the definition. But I'm assessed thousands and thousands of dollars for my street. And yet, now I'm being told, oh, it's just a driveway, which is not a driveway. You cannot get into my development without taking the street. And the street has a name to it. So how can we now say, well, it's not a street? It's just a part of a driveway system. And secondly, I really am concerned over on page four, on the back of the recommendations is to enforce more of streets that don't even, aren't even apparently, to aggressively make sure that other people are maintaining their property. So then I'm going to be assessed even thousands more potentially. Whereas you want, you drive, and this, Mike brings this up all the time, you drive on that road behind where Caldwell places and everything and between the car dealership and everything, and it has holes in it continuously. Even when it is repaired, in, in a very short period of time, it has significant holes. So it's really not, and yet, that's a private, as far as I understood it, I thought that was one of these roads you're talking about between commercial properties and all. So I, I really, I don't, I do not understand that why we have, because most of the things that are situations like I live in were built years ago. So the developers were given, you know, a request because they didn't want to meet code. And yet, the homeowner then is charged substantially for these costs. And yet, now the city's saying, oh, too bad, it's not a private road.
Well, I think the main, too, recognizing when this issue was brought up before, probably 20 years now, there were changes made to the code that requires the standard of the road be the same as the public streets that are put in. Now, we don't do the inspection in the same manner that we do the public streets inspection. But as far as the standard, that, the standards that are required, they are the same as for the public street. And some of the issue with the private street versus a private drive, a lot of that is, I would guess, more just how it's called versus what it is. And part of what we looked at was the issue of if it, if it relates to a condo or development similar to a condo, then typically, in all instances, it's pretty much funded by the assessments through, through the homeowners of that area. And that's, that's pretty typical as to how, how that works. Now, where we can make sure is if there's the issue of the quality or the standards that those, that the roads are put in.
Well, my, my original reason for bringing it up wasn't actually to, to end up the way you said, but it was to offer, say, is there some way that wherever, mostly it probably is condominiums, could be doing this at a lesser cost by partnering with the city? Or having it done at the same time the city is putting out bids or something? So that, because when they're doing it just arbitrarily, having this one little mile done, they're paying a top dollar for it. And we could be of assistance. We do this with entryways, and we have a lot of other instances where we have said even to waive cost of other things when there's very few homeowners in a situation, that we no longer have, you know, making them be responsible for parks and that kind of thing. So it seemed to me that there might be a way that we could offer assistance to people if they wanted to take advantage of that.
Well, and we can look at that. There may be some issues that we would have to check from the legal aspect. But the, the other thing that we did that would be similar to that was several years back with lawn care maintenance that HOAs provide. We tried to look at some solutions where if we put the different homeowners associations together, could they get a cheaper price? And it didn't, that one, it didn't really work out real well as far as being able to do that. But we can, we can look at those options.
You know, I, I think, I can see what Merrilee's doing on the economy of scale idea. But really, you know, once you cross into that, you're crossing into private ownership for these developments. And, I mean, you'd be setting a whole new precedent there, so.
Not if you're offering, these are options of how they can reduce their cost. I don't see where that's a negative. You've already done it to other homeowners association.
Yeah, if you can do a group by, you know, I can understand it. But once you leave that, you're starting to get into some really strange areas of changing law about these different condominium associations, and also start changing a precedence, you know?
Well, we've already done it with homeowners associations. So I don't think I'm requesting anything different to be looked at.
Well, we can look at the options, if there's some way if we can have homeowners associations work together. As far as the issue of adding on to our street maintenance, there may be some other legal issues or things that we need to be careful of getting involved in there. But we can look at those options and see if there is something that provides any type of benefit without any additional issues or liabilities from the city.
Okay. Kathy?
Steve, you have in there a memo about the update to the community plan? And have a question. I don't know if it belongs in here or not, but in looking at the minutes for Wellington Place, there was a concern about the extra-long cul-de-sac. And they were right. We have kind of tried to get away from that. Is there anything in the updated community plan that addresses that?
No, we don't usually get that specific in the community plan as far as that kind of design of roadway.
Is there something we should be looking at, saying that cul-de-sacs should not be longer than such and such a length?
Well, we have some of that. We also run that by our fire department, and they take a look at the lengths that they will accept in terms of lengths of cul-de-sac and ability to service. And it has to do with the number of houses that are on it and some other factors. But Alan Perkins looked at this one, and this one passed his scrutiny.
Okay. I hope that we'll be very careful about that. I understand it was an unusual sight to do that, but I hope that we will be very cognizant of, of that, you know, the length of the cul-de-sacs.
It is something we look at for those kinds of buildings.
Okay. Thank you. I did talk to Amy briefly on the telephone today about goal setting, and I think it's something we will want to discuss when we get closer to it. I would like us to really consider revamping it in some such way so that we can keep it to one day and start just concentrate only on goal setting as we've matured, our process has matured. And maybe we might have a pre-meeting and discuss exactly what we want to accomplish in goal setting and, and go from there. So it was just a brief conversation, something that I'd like for us to look into closer as we get to the point of setting the actual date.
Okay. Thank you. Amy?
Just quickly, we have three dates that we have narrowed to on the, our joint meeting with P and Z. Anne, if you would, could you please poll P and Z? And I would suggest that we just poll them and then go with the date where we can get the most folks from both bodies together. I'm fine with having it in this room based on the ability of us to hear ourselves. And then, you know, just something casual for dinner is, is fine by me. I don't know what the rest of you think about, about that. But we don't have to make it the production, it's just, you know, being together.
Amy, I'm sorry, would you please review those dates because everyone's calendar's getting busy?
Yeah, October 17th, it's a Wednesday. Tuesday, October 23rd, Monday, October 29th.
Thank you.
And Anne, thank you so much for chasing down all those dates. I think about herding cats every time I think of you trying to figure out how this all works. Anyway, in the last pre-P and Z meeting, we had a discussion about topics. And we kind of came to the conclusion that we could spend a lot of time on signage based on the lively discussion towards the end of our last meeting. We've got a lot to sort of digest with the Bridge Street Corridor, the new regulations there, and each neighborhood within the Bridge Street Corridor, what, you know, sorts of things are we interested in versus what are we perhaps not interested in? It's quite a departure from our, you know, typical mindset on signage. And then additionally, our change with the allowing multicolor logos also causes quite a bit of, of change that, again, is a departure from what we're used to. And so that was sort of agreed that that would be a great topic to focus on and that we could spend our time while doing that. So that's the plan, and I, I hope that, you know, you all would find it, find time to attend, because I think it's real, real important that we have these ongoing discussions. find time to attend, because I think it's real, real important that we have these ongoing discussions on these issues.
Question again.
Sure.
Thank you. So are we going to start with an idea of where we want to end up that evening? Like, we're going to talk about signs, but what, what are we trying to accomplish, and where are we trying to end up?
Well, I think, based on the discussion that I've had with P and Z, and then based on the, the discussion that we had last time, the discussion I've had with P and Z members, I think they want to make sure that we are all, staff, council, P and Z, sort of on the same page. What makes a quality sign? Come to a greater understanding of what is allowed by code and making sure, you know, this is, this is what we said we wanted. Is this really what we want, I guess? I know for me, I don't know that I have a complete understanding of what's allowed versus what's not allowed. And then, again, you know, coming to terms with what is a quality sign. And there's, you know, folks all over the map. You know, as Rich Taylor said, you know, every sign's going to be that fish sign, if it's up to me. But obviously, I'm not the only one, and, you know, there's certainly other sensibilities around the table. So I think just coming to a greater understanding of what we, what we said that we wanted. And then, you know, having a discussion about going forward, what's it going to mean to the community, because it is such a departure. And again, I personally don't have, I don't think I have a complete appreciation for that. And I think it's important that, you know, we all get on the same page, because some of this is going to go through an ART process. And, you know, understanding the process better for all of us as well. So that's, you know, my two cents on where we'd like to end up. I have a meeting tomorrow morning with Chairman Grooms and the other folks that attend the meetings, Jennifer, Steve, all the planners.
Okay.
And so if anybody has any ideas, you know, going into that meeting, we, you know, certainly will have more before we actually get into this, you know, finalizing the agenda for this, this signage meeting that we're going to have.
Thank you.
With that, Thursday, just remind everybody that the Civic Association Leadership Meeting is coming up this Thursday from 7:00 to 9:00. And it's at the rec center, and all are welcome to attend. And it's always a good time to get together with our homeowners association presidents and share sort of what's on their mind, hear what's going on in the community. And it's a great opportunity for them, I think, as well, to hear what's going on with the city. So I just want to remind everybody that that is coming up this Thursday. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. I would only like to compliment staff and city council with respect to the high bond ratings, maintaining our, the very highest possible bond ratings from both Moody's and Fitch in connection with the, the bond issuance, you know, that is coming up. And, you know, in the challenging times that we've experienced in the last few years, that's, that's no small feat. But, you know, I think everybody ought to take a bow. So, thank you very much. With that, we adjourn. Good night.